Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order on this Monday, February 5th, 2024. If you would be so kind to stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, and we just thank you so much for blessing Sanford and Lee County, Lord. You have truly done that for us with great communities and great people, Lord, and great businesses coming to our area, Lord. We thank you for that, Lord. We thank you for protecting one of our own, our Commissioner, Bill Carver, Lord, through the trauma he had while he was visiting and doing your work in Africa. Lord, we thank you for giving that comfort and peace to one of our own, Michael Brown, his family, passing his mother. And, Lord, tonight, we just ask you to give us that wisdom and that mercy and that grace, Lord, that you do as we make decisions that comes down to our county business, Lord. We love, we praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of announcements here. Commissioner Carver is recuperating from returning from an African mission trip this weekend, and we spoke earlier today, and he's fine. Commissioner Vorbik, unfortunately, just a few minutes ago, let me know that she's coming down with a low-grade fever and asked if she needed to be here, and we let her know she's excused. You have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additional items to the agenda?
I will offer, without objection, for A, amend the animal service ordinance to the consent agenda.
Motion's been made to...
And 5C. This is, unless Mr. Brown has the need to come before us.
Mr. Brown, regarding 5C, do you need to address it? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney, regarding the animal services ordinance?
It can go under consent, and just for the record, since everyone is not here and voting, it'll just be brought back on, but I can put it back on the consent agenda at the next meeting for the two votes.
Okay.
Right. And I would ask that we do a PSA on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other amendments or additions to the agenda? All right. The motion's been made to amend, excuse me, to add from old business for A, amend animal services ordinance, and under new business, to tax lien advertisement for delinquent 2023 real property taxes to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have, I do need approval of the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the amendment as amended.
As, I'm sorry, the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, consent agenda as amended.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And can we approve the agenda as amended?
Sub move.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have public comments this evening, and just a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, and we do ask that you provide us with your name and your address for the record. The first individual I have is Tom Lee. Mr. Lee?
My name is Tom Lee. I live at 2001 Plantation Drive. I wasn't born in Lee County, but I've been here 60 years. I've seen a few things, witnessed and experienced a lot, and one of the things that has been brought to my attention is a tremendous amount of money that is going to be necessary for the two middle schools gymnasiums. And I would like for you to consider an alternative. I believe in shared spaces, and I believe in multipurpose buildings. I worked at the PNC Center before it was opened for five years and saw that building used for hundreds of different events. And I feel like in Lee County, we could do the same thing. I've talked with county leaders, city, and school leaders about the possibility of having one gymnasium to serve the two existing middle schools and possibly schools in the future. This building would be a multipurpose building. I would suggest a large venue that would serve all of the middle school sports needs and possibly future middle schools, school assemblies, use it for a school emergency site, graduations for high schools for Lee County and surrounding counties. I spent a better part of this morning at the Civic Center discussing the potential. There's a great potential for concerts, sports, trade shows, political conventions, car shows, and it would be endless if we had a larger facility. And I feel from the research that I've done is that a 5,000-seat venue for sports activities, there are a lot of sports that are growing. Volleyball is doing well. Basketball is strong, and it would be a great opportunity for Lee County to build a building that is needed. We have discussed 5,000 seats for sporting events and 6,000 for concerts. It has felt that that would be the size that would be appropriate for Lee County. There's a new venue that has been built in eastern part of the state, similar size, and one in the western part of the state. But the Civic Center is being used for out-of-county graduations, and the needs are there for the adjoining counties for a space that size. But I'd like for you to consider that, and as a side note, the expense at Paul B. Gay Stadium is going to be huge, and maybe we consider one facility for football. I was at the high school in the glory days, and I've had kids in school for 25 years, and I've got a fourth grader now at Tramway. So I'm interested in what's going on with the Lee County schools. But maybe we should have a multi-use football stadium. But I think we need to share in the county. The school system is well-spaced around the county. I think we need to utilize what we have, and maybe you have one football stadium, maybe one soccer stadium or whatever. But I think we need to share, and we have to use our facilities to their fullest potential. Thank you.
Next individual, David Smoke. And again, you have three minutes. Please express your, or recognize your name and your address, sir.
Thank you. It's David Smoke, 96 North Ridge Trail, Sanford, 27332. Good evening, Commissioners. I do not plan on speaking at every one of your meetings between now and November, but I will occasionally come up and share some of my wish list items that I would like you to consider, whether or not I am elected to sit among you. I also know that I have frequently said before, understand that you have more knowledge in what is going on behind the scenes than I do, and if nobody has said it yet this year, thank you for your service toward our county. I will present three quick ideas regarding the county budget and our taxes. First one is a new concept, considers that you adopt a two-year budget cycle similar to what the state does in the hopes of giving us citizens a little more regularity and ability to plan. Obviously, this would not be the year to implement it, but in 2025, you will have a hopefully fixed roster of commissioners until the next election cycle in November of 2026. Of course, just like having a mid-year adjustment now, the commissioners could adjust a second year as needed also. The point is to communicate to both the citizens and government employees a longer-term vision of spending as possible. The second idea is also quickie. As someone who pays property taxes directly and not from an escrow account, I assure you that you will not receive my payment until right before you start charging penalties and interest in late, late December. Right now, with Vanguard paying 5.3% annually, I have no incentive to pay by the purported due date in August. I would like you to consider some sort of financial incentive that would benefit both the county and the taxpayer if you want our money earlier in the next January. Finally, I know that while the top-line property tax rate is getting a lot of citizens upset, I also hear from others how even though we do have lower costs and taxes here than in other states, it gets a little tiresome how the government here wants to tax everything, even just a little bit. I've said before that I'd like to recommend the elimination of the 2% grocery tax, and maybe that is still a bridge too far. However, one idea that was actually inspired by a comment from a Sanford City Councilman when the food truck ordinance was being voted on between the city and county is regarding the local-use sales tax collected from those small businesses. I may be wrong, but it is worth investigating if food trucks registered outside of Lee County ever pay the 2% of their sales tax collected here when making sales here. I imagine how complex that accounting would be, especially if a food truck travels to multiple counties in the same day. What I would recommend, if what I believe is true and the total local-use sales tax collected by food trucks is negligible, is to simply eliminate that tax if legally possible. I admit it would give food trucks a little more of an advantage over the fixed restaurants by allowing them to charge less taxes. However, there are two strong reasons you should consider in favor of this idea. First, it would prevent Lee County residents from unknowingly supporting the budgets of other counties. Second, it would be great public relations that you're trying to find ways to not only reduce tax burdens but eliminate them entirely. Our citizens would gleefully help enforce this tax elimination by informing all those trucks coming here to do business that they better not be charging the full 7% sales tax to us. As always, I am willing to expand on my topics or answer your questions later. Thank you for this time.
Moving on to old business, item 4B, ARPA funds update, and I believe, oh, she's there. I didn't stop looking over there.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, and I appreciate you allowing me to bring you the ARPA update. I did present, or I'm sorry, provide you a new MB squared update. Kind of make a little bit of modification, so you'll see that at your chair. Most importantly, I want to bring to your attention the, what I refer to as the hard code, hardcoded ARPA dollars. It's the federal funding that we report on, and we have had a few of our projects complete, and so we have a few expenditures that need to be re-obligated before December 31st of '24, okay? And I know that seems far off, but as you all know, the budget season just whips by, and here we are, and we just want to make sure that these funds are fully obligated in a, you know, in a timely manner. So currently, we have $133,160.42 that needs to be re-obligated. We currently have, you'll see, under the revenue loss, that there's a remaining amount under the broadband great grant and the CAB program. We are under contract, and those are obligated for the great grant project. We do have $1.75 million that is set aside for the CAB program, which we have discussed recently with NCEDIT, so those contracts should be underway very soon. We can always pivot if we need to, but it looks pretty promising for us to get those contracts. We have to go through a RFP process with NCEDIT, but that should be taking place very soon. So I just want to reiterate that the $133,160.100 needs to be re-obligated no later than December 31st of '24. If you would look at your MB squared breakdown, nothing really has changed with the exceptions of there's been a few more programs that have closed out, projects that have finalized, and there's a few more dollars to be re-obligated. And you'll notice it is the OT Sloan Lighting, the Lucas CPR Machines, and the Horton Sanitation Facility Additional Funds. That leaves us a remaining of, a re-obligation of $45,457. And when you look at the very bottom where the gray area is, that's a total after you consider the board-approved Mental Health Initiative of 1.5. That leaves a remaining of $437,232.91. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Jen, please. Commissioner Sherwood.
None.
Commissioner Reeves.
Not at this time, no.
Commissioner, Commissioner Loeb.
No questions, thank you.
Manager.
At the board retreat, we presented to you several different items showing where we stood on certain projects and funds that we were going to have left in the ARPA funds and some of those projects. The consensus then was that we fully fund the store courthouse renovations, a parking lot at OT Sloan, parking lot at Horton, along with sidewalks and gutter at Horton based on the estimates that we had at that time. After reviewing all the projects and moving some money around, I am still short funds for the OT Sloan parking lot and the Horton parking lot. Those total $577,509. If we use the $133,160 that Jen showed you in the hard ARPA dollars, that still leaves us $444,349 short. So I'm asking that you go ahead and allocate those funds, if that is your wish, from the MB squared funds that you see here tonight, so that we have $449,084 roughly of those. And that's after taking the 180 for, there may be a little bit of difference between the $437 and the $449. I forget where the difference came from, but there was a difference. So roughly $180,000 would still be held to match a grant for Broadway if they get their grant.
So is that enough money to take care of both of the parks?
Yes, sir.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Horton Park sidewalk and parking lot pavement as well as the parking lot pavement at OT Sloan, and the amount is...
$444,300. Well, you are going to take the $444,349 and the $133, so $577,509.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Under new business, we have the Charters of Freedom presentation, and I understand the gentleman is here. Okay, Mr. Lewis is here, and your name, sir.
I'm David Streeter, and it's like when you go to a rock concert or a country music concert, you know, you have an opening act that's not as good as the main act. Well, that's me. I'm the opening act, so, and then you'll get the main act with Mr. Lewis. But all kidding aside, Commissioners and manager and citizens, thank you for allowing us to come and take some of your time tonight. Ron and I are colleagues and friends, and we both work for Charters of Freedom. It's also known as Foundation Forward, and we build replicas, life-size replicas of the Charters of Freedom. If you've ever had a great opportunity to see them in the National Archives in Washington, DC, and they are comprised of the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And we have also added another document to that that Mr. Lewis will tell you about in just a little while. A lot of people, and it's understandable, have a tendency to want to call these monuments, but we call them settings. And let me take just a moment to explain why, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Lewis. A monument is something that pays an homage or honor to a person, a place, or a plaque or something like that, to something that is no longer with us. They're usually deceased. However, the Charters of Freedom, Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights are very much alive and well. Because of those documents, gives us the liberties and freedoms that we all enjoy every day, including a forum such as this. So that's the reason we call them settings as opposed to a monument. So based on that, I'm going to turn around and now hand it over to my friend and colleague, Mr. Lewis, and he will go through our presentation, and then we'll answer any questions you may have, either during or afterwards.
Thanks, David. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you. I'm an old county manager, so I kind of like these meetings. Gives me a chance to see how my colleagues and the elected officials across North Carolina conduct their business. Thank you for having us tonight, and we're excited to be here. We hope to soon add a setting here in your beautiful county. I'm going to, I'm not computer literate, but your gentleman, oh, there it works. I was a, an officer in the Marine Corps, and Dr. Streeter was an E3 in the Navy, but I think every Marine officer should have a naval E3 to kind of look after them and kind of drive him around.
Officer wouldn't get there otherwise.
Our organization has been in operation just a little over 10 years ago. We've been building settings. Our first business plan was to build out North Carolina and then move across South Carolina and do the 46 counties in South Carolina. But fortunately or unfortunately, we're a small staff. There's about 10 of us, and other places in the country started learning about what we do. David, next slide. Next one after that. We're in 11 different states. We're as far north as Alaska, as far west as Nevada. We're preparing this spring to build a setting at the Reagan Library in California. We're excited about that, and that really is a shot in the arm for a little nonprofit in North Carolina that stood up its organization 10 years ago and started building the Charters of Freedom. Next slide, David. Now, let's back up one, back up one. How many people in this room have been to the National Archives Building to see the documents? Wow, 1, 2, 3?
Oh, yeah.
I'm impressed. Lee County has a good turnout of people that have seen the documents. About a year ago, we were invited up to, by the staff of the National Archives, and they said to us that, "We've heard about you," and I thought to myself, "Uh-oh, what have we done wrong?" But we had a wonderful meeting with them, and at the end of the meeting, they said, "Would you like to go out into the rotunda and look at the documents?" We walked down a hall, make a turn to the right, and there is the documents. I had seen them in the '70s as a young lieutenant at Quantico, but every time that I have seen them, it almost takes my breath to realize that those are the documents that our founding fathers created. Once you come through these big bronze doors, they don't rush you. You take your time, you look at the documents, you read, you learn about them. The Declaration of Independence is on the left, four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and the original proposed Bill of Rights, which are the first 10 amendments, are on the right side. We have added a fourth pedestal to that. David and I were making a presentation in Monroe, North Carolina. Now, I had been the county manager and union, so I thought I was going home for just a friendly visit. Councilman on my left to the front said, "Mr. Lewis, you did a great job on your presentation, but you didn't do anything for me." Uh-oh. And I stood back and let him speak, and he was right. I hadn't done anything to pay honor to this gentleman who was serving on the council of this great city. So I went back, and we sat around the conference room, and we said, "You know, we got a problem, folks. We need to fix this." About a month later, our founding, our founder, Vance Patterson, who is an amazing gentleman, I've never met someone as giving in my 74 years and 38 years as a county manager. I've never met anyone more giving than Vance Patterson. So he laid out a proposal. We're going to build a fourth pedestal, and it's going to be called the Civil Rights Amendments. It has the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments, which makes us all the same, regardless of your gender, regardless of the color of your skin. Under the Constitution, we are all the same. Now, when Jefferson and James Madison left Virginia to go to Philadelphia to pen the Constitution, they took with them what they call the Virginia Papers. The Virginia Papers eliminated slavery. It didn't take them long after they got to Philadelphia to figure out that they didn't have the votes to pass a document similar to the Virginia Papers. But they were bright enough to put language within the Constitution that allowed it to be amended as society changes and as we change and as our country has changed. From time to time, the Constitution needs to be amended. Therefore, we now have the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments, which make us all the same. About six months after that, we went back to Monroe, David and I, to do a follow-up meeting, and I carried a framed, what do you call those things, David? It was a framed document, but it was a print. It was a nice framed print, and we presented that to the city council in Monroe. The young African-American that sat about where this gentleman is sitting had tears running out of his eyes because we had responded to what he had brought to our attention. And now we proudly build a fourth pedestal which completes the circle and makes us all the same. Next slide, David. We propose to build in Lee County a project that would have the Declaration of Independence, the four pages of the Constitution, and the civil rights, the Civil Rights Amendments, and gift it to Lee County at no cost. Now, the 30 that we have built and dedicated in North Carolina to this point has all been built with private dollars. We recently got an appropriation from the state of North Carolina to build 20 new settings this coming year. Now, my senator, bless his heart, gave us a list of senators who had helped him get that appropriation through the legislature. And believe me, this is our third year working on that. It's not an easy thing to do. It's not easy to get an appropriation through the legislature. the legislature. But your senator was very active in helping our senator get this appropriation through. And you're one of eight counties that's on my list to hustle to the front of the line to build the charters of freedom in Lee County. So, when I call your wonderful clerk, by the way, if I were still a manager, I'd steal her away from you. But when I called your wonderful clerk, she quickly, somehow or another, perhaps, manager, she got me on your agenda. So, we're glad to be here, and we're glad that your senator helped our senator get this appropriation. Next slide, David.
Who is your senator?
Our senator is Warren Daniel.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's the way the original documents look in Washington. Next slide. This is the first one that we built. This is on the courthouse grounds in Burke County, our home county. At that time, when we were building, this, the first one, we hardly knew what we were doing. Vance Patterson made a special trip to Washington to try to get the information on the dimensions. You can't take a camera in the National Archives. You can't take a tape measure into the National Archives. So, our original estimations are based on three marks on a wife's clothes and four steps from a short guy. But we're pretty close. We're really, really, very close to the actual dimensions. We found out the dimensions when we were in Washington at the National Archives. They finally gave us that information. And we're very, very, very close with what we built. Next slide, David. We hope, in the future, excuse me, that you'll be able to use the charters of freedom here in beautiful Lee County for many different things. Do we have any veterans in the group? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Right here. Thank you, sir. Yes. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Veterans like what we do, because we each took an oath to protect and defend that Constitution. And the reason we built thirty across North Carolina without any government assistance was the many veterans that step up to the plate around North Carolina and across the country to build the charters of freedom. Next slide, David. This is what it's all about. We want children and their teachers to come to your charters of freedom and learn about those documents, and perhaps learn a little local history in how this area has advanced from those colonial days until today. Next slide, David. I've been known to dress up like Benjamin Franklin. That's me. Do we have any educators in here? Got some educators here. I hope I live long enough to see the public education students cling to the charters of freedom as much as the homeschoolers do. Everywhere, we've made a presentation with homeschoolers. They just are sponges. They just absorb the charters of freedom and every word that comes out of our mouth. Next slide, David. Okay, Foundation Forward Educational Nonprofit, next. There are three thousand, four hundred and forty-three, I think, counties, boroughs, special districts in North Carolina. Our goal over the next ten years is to place as many of those with the charters of freedom as we can possibly do. Chances are, ten years from now, I won't be here doing this, but there'll be someone to step in and take my place. Next slide, David. Next slide. When we move along with this process, there used to be a time where I would stand at the podium and tell the county, "You tell me where to put it, and that's where we'll put it." I can't do that anymore, because out of thirty, there's probably two that should have been at a different location. But two is too many. So, when you tell us two or three sites that you think might work, we will actually visit with our construction team and evaluate the site and tell you if that works. Once we come to an acceptable site, we'll share with you what's called a memorandum of understanding. It points out what we will do. And a few things that the counties actually respond, that any accessories to the charters of freedom that the county wants to add would be your expenses. But it can be as simple as planting grass seed there, or as complex as three flagpoles and sidewalks and those kinds of things. But we will get to that stage. At this point in time, I need to ask if there are any questions, so that we can answer them for you tonight. And then, if you'll nod your head that you'll accept our gift, Mr. Chairman, we'll get to going on the specifics.
Commissioner Lovick, questions?
So you're saying you build the actual?
We build a fourth pedestal.
Yeah, so we're responsible for, say, sidewalks and flagpoles.
Run-ups, yeah, that kind of thing. Yes, sir. We would also like your permission to build what's called a field of honor. The veterans like the field of honor, because we engrave bricks with their name on it and tell their branch of service that they served in and those kinds of things. The bricks cost a hundred dollars. They help us offset some of our costs. We'll add a donor's pedestal for people like concrete companies and other things that will contribute a little more than the brick. But a hundred percent of the setting will be absorbed by our organization.
Thank you.
And again, Mr. Commissioner, all this will be in writing. There'll be, everything will be crystal clear when we get to that point.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
It would have been helpful to have this document a little sooner than tonight.
Yes, sir.
First time I've seen it. And the information I read in the agenda package indicated that it would be Lee or Hart. Are you now saying it's going to be Lee?
Let me say it in a different way. Let me make it crystal clear, Commissioner. When I got the list of eight counties from our senator, I called every county, and your clerk was Johnny on the spot. I'm making my first presentation here. I'll be glad to come and make a very similar presentation in the other county. But our commitment tonight is to Lee County.
That's what I was asking.
Did that answer your question, sir?
So far.
Yes, sir. But I think in this unique situation, there'll probably be one in that county as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Again, manager, if I were the county manager, I'd be stealing that girl over there.
Hands off, sir.
Believe me, Mr. Chairman, I've been retired a long time. Any other questions?
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, did I hear you right in saying that the bricks were for veteran, a hundred dollars for veterans, or anyone?
Anybody, anybody. What I meant to say was, I probably didn't do it very good, was that veterans like that. Veterans will step up and say, "Yeah, I want that. I want to show my county and my grandchildren that I had a little bit to do with that."
But it is for everybody.
It's for anybody and everybody. I just, I misspoke by saying that veterans like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Even squabbies over here like that. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. I understand that you said that the state had funded this through the, for twenty projects?
For the first time ever, we have appropriation for a half a million dollars from the state of North Carolina. That is the first public dollars that's ever been spent on the charters of freedom. Yes, sir. We have built and dedicated thirty. There's three under construction. I have sixty-seven more to go, because this seventy-four-year-old guy is not going to retire until every county in North Carolina has the charters of freedom. Now, the state's appropriation is going to help us tremendously, because now I can go into about twenty counties and, from here east. From here west, we're pretty saturated. But I can go from here east and build those twenty settings and be a long ways toward my hundred number to have all counties in North Carolina with the charters of freedom. Did I answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Not a question, but I was thinking out loud, we do have a new library we're building. We're working, as we speak, an athletic park, and we have a courthouse. And I'm going to pose this question to Ms. Gamble regarding, how soon can we activate some sort of plan to incorporate it either in the library or the athletic park?
Well, I think for the library, we could probably sit down and look at the conceptual. We're getting ready to go out to bid on the construction in the spring, but we can kind of show you the site as far as the vacant property and the conceptual on what the build out of the library will be. There's some exterior portions that could potentially feature this as an educational opportunity out there. So, I mean, that could be a good location for it. It's not something that you could really visibly tour, and the actual constructability of this probably wouldn't take place until 2025, because we're looking at opening the doors to that library late 2025 if everything goes on time.
That's certainly doable. I was hoping we could build before then, but we just did that in North Hampton County, and we did that in Waxahaw, North Carolina, where they were building projects. And so, that's doable. That wouldn't be my first choice.
The manager advised that we should probably want to give you three possible venues for your technical team to review.
Yes, sir.
As a possibility. But what is the pleasure of the board? Any further questions?
Mister?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may ask, and that would give us an opportunity to review the MOU that spells out the responsibilities of both the organization and the county while we're working with that before we, you know, accept anything, it would be good to see what the agreement indicates.
We can do that.
If they can get that information, I'm sure you have the clerk's email information. So if y'all could email her the memorandum of agreement, so we could take a look at that. Yes, absolutely. We can put it on for a vote at the next meeting.
We'll certainly do that.
That would be great.
And did I understand that we give you three sites. You determine which site you're going to build?
We will. I'll bring the construction manager here. We will evaluate the site. If it's not compatible, we'll tell you right up front. It's not something we're going to drag out. It's our advantage and your advantage if we find the site pretty quickly. I would hope this early spring, summer, we would be under construction.
That may eliminate some of our sites.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
That's okay, too. I mean, I don't want to rush you into doing something that's not best for Lee County.
We're just blessed to have a couple great opportunities that would, especially at library, maybe the education part of it also.
And speaking of the education part, being the director of education for Foundation Forward, something that I would like you to please keep in mind is some of the things that we promote as far as the location for all of our settings, is they be in a nice location. It's accessible twenty-four seven. Also, it's fairly easy, not fairly, but easy to get to. It's accessible as far as ADA compliant, that there is ample parking for not only cars, but for school buses. One of the big things that we, I guess, advocate, for lack of better words, is for, to be used for education purposes and many other purposes as well. And if school buses have at least access to pull up, let students off, easy to pick them back up, and then go from there, if not available to park just right there at the location, that's one of our criteria, or all of the criterias, that it be available to everyone twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, and easily accessible, and where there's a lot of foot traffic. So the more people who can see it without having to make an effort to go there for some other reason, like going to the library as just an example, or coming to the courthouse for whatever reasons, they say, "Oh, what is that?" And they go over, and then they discover, "Oh, this is the charters of freedom, the Declaration, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Civil Rights Amendments." So, just food for thought as you're making your decision.
Mr. Lewis, the question regarding, it has to be twenty-four seven available? Because I know the library is going to be closed at a certain time. We don't want people wandering the grounds. Our parks are closed at a certain time. I'm just curious if that's a solid stone.
That's our preference.
Preference or requirement?
It's not a done deal requirement, but it is a, it's certainly a preference of ours.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Do I have a consensus that we move forward as advised by the attorney?
Yeah.
General consensus?
She's going to get the memorandum and bring it back to us.
And then we'll move forward from there. And can I get three possible, I was just listing items here, library, athletic park, Central Carolina Community College?
Courthouse.
Courthouse.
Well, you're not going to get a plus on the courthouse.
That's true. You've got a big parking lot.
Yeah.
Right next to the.
You've got a big parking lot.
You haven't been to the register of deeds?
No.
Parking lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we have a picture made with the board?
More than welcome to. I apologize that two members are missing, but if you come next time, they'll be here.
Okay.
One's a naval officer, by the way.
We keep that kind of archives.
That'd be fine.
Very good. It's been a pleasure to be with you tonight.
So we have a consensus, sir, gentlemen, we're going to review.
Sure.
How soon can we get you back?
Tomorrow.
Next board meeting, I mean.
If not the next board, probably a month from now.
Okay.
Could we have a month?
We can plan on that.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? And you're not taking his job. Next item on the agenda is the Triangle Land Conservancy presentation on farmland, preservation, resources, and opportunity for Lee County. And Dr. Bill, are you going to introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and your members. My pleasure to be here with you tonight to introduce our visitors from the Triangle Land Conservancy. And this, this visit is actually, or actually stemmed from a meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. And this visit is actually, or actually stemmed from a meeting that we had a couple weeks ago with our Agricultural Advisory Board, which is the county's advisory board as it relates to all things agriculture. And this board, over the last couple months, we get together, you know, four times a year, five times a year, depending on the amount of voluntary ag district applications we have. But one of the things that has been coming up at every single meeting by our members is, what are we doing about development pressure that our county is facing and how it relates to agriculture? And it became just kind of that common refrain. So we really recognize that it was important for this board to begin to, you know, put forth some information related to what the county, the tools that the county has that other organizations can help support us with as we think about the future of the county and what, you know, what our county will look like 20, 30 years from now and why it's so important to have that conversation now. So I would like to welcome, tonight with us, we have Sandy Switzer, which is the, or who is the Executive Director of the Triangle Land Conservancy, and also Margaret Sands, who's the Associate Director of Land Protection in the Western District. And they shared this presentation with us, or a version of us, a couple weeks ago at our Agriculture Advisory Board meeting. Chairman Smith was there, and he invited Margaret to join us tonight. So Margaret is here, and I will go ahead and turn the presentation over to her.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invite. So as you were saying, I'm Margaret Sands. I'm the Associate Director of Land Protection for Triangle Land Conservancy. So thank you for having me here tonight. And I'm going to be talking to you tonight about some of the options for farmland protection here in Lee County. So Triangle Land Conservancy is a land trust. So we are one of 30 land trusts across the state of North Carolina, and we are a specific kind of environmental nonprofit that uses land conservation as a tool for community benefit. So for Triangle Land Conservancy, specifically working in the Triangle region of North Carolina, we're always trying to achieve four main public benefits with our work. So we're trying to safeguard clean drinking water, protect natural habitats, support local farms and food, and connect people with nature. We've been doing that here in the Triangle since 1983. We have seven public nature preserves and one public boat access, which is located here in Lee County on the Deep River. And our first nature preserve is actually White Pines Nature Preserve, which is also on the Deep River, right at the confluence of the Deep and the Rocky. Has anyone been to White Pines Nature Preserve before? Excellent. The rest of you have some hiking to do this weekend. So we have helped conserve almost 25,000 acres across the Triangle through acquisitions, conservation easements, which I'll be talking more about tonight, and transfers. So with transfers, that's when we assist a municipality or other government in a land transaction. So Endor Iron Furnace is an example of a property that we helped out with here, and Raven Rock State Park was another project that we assisted with. So tonight, we'll be talking about supporting local farms and food. And the main way that we do that is through conservation easements. So TLC works with willing landowners to acquire conservation easements on working farms and forests throughout our region. So conservation easements are voluntary legal agreements that limit the uses on properties that are inconsistent with agricultural production and conservation values. So the landowners still own the land and can use it, manage it, farm it, sell it, or pass the land on to their heirs. But the land will be conserved and available for agricultural use in perpetuity. And conservation easements do not allow public access. They are, it's still privately owned and managed land held by the landowner, and TLC becomes the steward of the conservation values. So TLC typically acquires conservation easements using some combination of federal, state, and local dollars plus landowner donation, and we call this combination a bargain sale. So then, once we've acquired a conservation easement, it's attached to the deed of the property and it runs with the land. So those restrictions run with the property no matter who owns it in the future. And TLC staff come out annually to monitor our conservation easements. We have a staff member and a team of volunteers whose job it is to go out and monitor each of our 170 easements every year. And so to ensure that those easements are still intact and to maintain our landowner relationships. We, Mr. Chairman, we were discussing dairy farms earlier. This picture here is in Chatham County. It was one of the last dairy farms in Chatham County that we put a conservation easement on just last year. It's a 260-acre farm there in Chatham. And there are quite a few benefits for conservation easements. The first are the benefits to the landowners. Why would a family want to consider a conservation easement? A big reason is that landowners have the opportunity to capitalize on their development rights when they sell a conservation easement, but they don't actually have to give up their farm or management or actually develop their land. So most working lands properties are already enrolled in the present use value program, and conservation easement restrictions don't really change the existing operations. They're still managing their property as a working farm or forest, and they can continue to do that. This can be an opportunity to pay down debt, buy more land, make improvements. The family I showed in the previous slide, they had a lot of infrastructure improvements that they really needed to address on their land. So when we were able to buy a conservation easement from them, they were able to upgrade a lot of their infrastructure and buildings on site. Some of our other landowners have purchased land down the road that then they've also added into conservation easements at later times. They can take advantage of tax benefits for donated easement value. That's those bargain sale properties. If they are donating part of their conservation easement, there can be tax benefits associated that for several years into their future on their income taxes, and there's some estate tax benefits as well. And this is the big one. Landowners know that their farm or forest is protected forever. We work with a lot of people who have spent their lifetime and sometimes many generations into improving their soil, working their land. And we call that a land ethic or a conservation ethic where they want the peace of mind of knowing that their property is going to continue to be available as open space for farms and forests in the future. So there are also quite a few benefits to community for conservation easements. Easements preserve working lands so that we still have open space, food security, and we have those open lands to improve community livelihood. Prime soils are the soils that the state of North Carolina has designated as the top quality for agricultural use. And so that means that those soils are often what we target with our grant funding sources. You have lots of prime soils here in Lee County. And so preserving those soils mean they're going to be available for future agricultural use. One of our farmers likes to say that concrete is the last crop. So good to keep those soils available for growing food. Properties with conservation easements have a reduced value, so it's easier for farmers to start or expand operations onto conserved land because it's more affordable. And agricultural lands generate more money than they use. So more protected farms means more net providers of tax dollars. As my dad always says, cows don't go to school. So there can be a net benefit in the use of public services versus providing to the local economy. Farms and forests provide flood resilience and wildlife habitat in addition to food and fiber. So this is our regional map again, showing our six county area, but this time it shows our 98 agricultural easements, which cover about 8,000 acres in our territory. And so the green bubbles are our conservation easements on agricultural or working lands. And we also own three working farms, which are shown in the icons there. So TLC does own and manage now two working farms that we hold and manage ourselves. But mostly, we work with private landowners. So we have those 98 agricultural easements on working lands. And the orange that you can see there are all the properties in our region that are currently enrolled in the Working Lands Tax Status Program. So that's the present use value program that most farms and forests are enrolled in if they are an active farm or forest because it lowers their annual property tax burden. So this shows the contrast in the availability of working farms and forests in the region. As you can see, you still have lots of working farms and forests in Lee County, but we're lacking some of those green bubbles. So that's one of the reasons we're here tonight and why we've been working, presenting at some of your local forums, trying to think of ways that we can be more active here in Lee County. So I'm going to walk you through some of the partnerships we have with our other counties just as examples of some of the ways that we've worked with local partners. So first up is Chatham County. In 2022, the Chatham County Board of Commissioners officially established their Agricultural Preservation and Development Trust Fund. And so they have funded their $600,000 investment for working lands conservation with sales tax revenue. And they also hired a farmland preservation coordinator to work on agricultural support projects and administer county grants. So this was in keeping with the Chatham comprehensive plan that really valued rural character as one of the things that they wanted to see preserved in Chatham. And so officially establishing that fund, they did this in cooperation with us because we've had a pretty strong hand in conservation in Chatham County, especially in the Silk Hope region, which is one of their historical agricultural communities that they wanted to see preserved. Johnston County is another county that we work very closely with annually. They tend to allocate funds for specific conservation projects in their individual budget cycles. So in 2022, they allocated $665,000 to working lands conservation easements that Triangle Land Conservancy was purchasing in Johnston County. In 2023, they allocated $825,000 for those easements. And of that, 110,000 of it came from rollback taxes. So rollback taxes are related to that map and the program that I showed on the previous slide, the present use value program. All those farms and forests are enrolled as working farms and forests in the present use value program. And if they choose to leave that program, they need to pay the last three years of back taxes that they had the discount on. And so that fee when they leave, the program is called a rollback tax. And so when farms are converted to non-agricultural use, that rollback taxes do. So in Durham and Orange County, we work with both of these counties really similarly because they both have open space programs and staff members. So they also acquire conservation easements. So the Durham Working Lands Map, sorry, it's probably a little small back there, but shows that some of the working lands that the county has acquired. And in those areas, in both Durham and Orange County, we have the opportunity to partner with the counties on specific projects that help achieve the open space and land use plan. So we're all able to stretch our resources a little further. Sometimes we're able to apply for grants that they might not be eligible for, and they might be able to hold an easement that's better suited to their capacities. And both of those counties contribute approximately $500,000 annually for their open space conservation projects, including agricultural easements. And finally, we have Wake County, and they have just established their farmland preservation program also in 2022. They also hired a farmland preservation coordinator, and their program is entirely funded with rollback taxes. So those fees that come when you lose a farm, they're now invested into the protection of remaining farms in Wake County. And as of January 2024, that was approximately $3 million in rollback taxes for that preservation program. So one of our goals as TLC is to leverage local investments and leverage all of these funds to stretch them further. One of the ways we do that is by applying for USDA funds through the Natural Resource Conservation Service. They have an agricultural conservation easement program called the Agricultural Lands Easement Program. So lots of acronyms always in the federal government.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Durham and Orange County.
Yes.
Their half million dollars, is that jointly or independent?
Independent. Each of them put a half million into their budget each year for agricultural conservation and other open land conservation acquisition. So the U.S. Department of Agriculture, this is, of course, a national program. So it is pretty competitive because our local farms are put up against, you know, thousands of acres of ranchland in the Midwest. But we do have some of these Natural Resource Conservation Service Agricultural Lands Easement properties here. And we also have a state fund, which is the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust. So this is a Department of North Carolina's Department of Agriculture, and it is a competitive state grant program that funds agricultural easements. So we apply to this program every year, usually it's in December, and they fund family farm conservation across North Carolina. And they have a recurring budget in the state budget, and they also sometimes have non-recurring funds added as well, all to purchase, well, mostly to purchase agricultural conservation easements. And this year, they launched a local agriculture growth zone program where they are committing to matching some of their state funds to local governments and other agricultural communities who have dedicated their own local funds to agricultural conservation. And also, we almost always use landowner in-kind donation of value, which means almost all of TLC's conservation easements have some level of landowner donation involved. This isn't cash that they're putting up. This is land value that they're agreeing to donate to TLC, who's a 501(c)(3). So some of our success stories here, we've got Hatcher's Bridge Tree Farm, which is 98 acres in Johnston County. It's been in the family since the 1940s. It's a demonstration site for ag and forestry practices. And this one was funded with 38% of the funds coming from Johnston County, 49% of the funds coming from the state of North Carolina through that ag development fund, and the rest was landowner donation. So that came to 13%. And then the Bailey Farm is one that was, got a lot of press and was in the news recently. You can see a podium out in a field there because this is a produce farm where they grow zucchini squash, sweet potatoes. They're known for their sweet potatoes. And this was the first one that was funded through the Wake County Farmland Preservation Program. So this is that program that uses Wake County's rollback taxes in order to preserve remaining farms. So 40% of the funding came through that, and the landowner donated the remaining 60%. And we're hoping this will be our next success story, which is the Ayers Family Farm here in Lee County. We have already submitted an application to the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund in their last December cycle. This is the first one we've submitted in Lee County. And so we're very excited to have this one submitted, and we submitted it through the state PUV program, which means the state would fund 75% of the conservation easement, and the Ayers have agreed to donate 25% of the conservation easement's value, which is about $730,000 for their farm. And the state funding decision will be in...
How many acres is that for?
It's about 45. And so the state funding decision will be in the fall. And they are still, we're still seeking $16,000 in match for the stewardship endowment, but we have a little, we have a little time before their decision in the fall. But that's just an example of one of the ways that we're hoping the breakdown will work here in Lee County. So in Lee County, we've got 250 farms, registered farms currently, which is almost 40,000 acres of farmland. 99% of that is family farms. And over 94,000 acres of private timberland with up to, which is about 58% of the county. And here in Lee County, farms generate about $40 million a year and $283 million combined with other agriculture and agribusiness. So that's a lot of local jobs that involve, you know, feed and equipment sales, processing, marketing, selling products, all the support for the agricultural economy. And so as we've discussed throughout, throughout many meetings and topics here, everything's growing and changing, and of course, that's happening here in Lee County as well. But across the state of North Carolina, we've been getting some attention lately nationally from the American Farmland Trust. So they put out farmland data reports. They're a national nonprofit that does farmland data examinations and analysis. And in their Farms Under Threat 2040 report, they found that North Carolina is second in the country for farmland loss. So we... So we are slated to lose 1.1 million acres by 2040, and that's the highest rate in the country except for Texas. And so looking at their data, they take national data and data sets and create some of these GIS models that predict how growth is going to happen in the next 20 years. And so they estimate a $1.2 billion reduction in farm output and a loss of over 19,000 jobs in North Carolina. And as you can see, there's a lot of growth happening here. The orange is the growth and development. But since this is a national model using national data sets, there's a lot that is not even considered or represented here because already we're seeing some of the things that are coming to the area that might change how our, how our area grows. And of course, growth is, is going to happen, and so it's important to just think about how we want to grow and plan for the ways that we can ensure that we're growing economically while maintaining the things that are important to our communities. And so luckily, y'all have already done a lot of great planning. And so the, by funding agricultural conservation, it puts the Plan San Lee Plan into action. These are some of the quotes from that plan, which included an objective that recommended promoting the long-term sustainability of Lee County's rich rural and agricultural heritage by directing growth away from productive farming areas and concentrating development in urbanized portions of the county. So by doing more agricultural conservation easements, it tends to create little blocks and hubs of protected lands, especially, you can see this in Chatham County around the Silk Hope area where lots of the easements are within the same vicinity of each other or adjacent, and it can help to combat sprawl in rural areas because it sets aside some of those areas for agricultural production specifically. And it's also supported by the Lee County Working Lands Protection Plan from 2010, which the number one recommendation was to begin preliminary discussions of a public-private funding partnership for farmland preservation programs with local government, the public, and local business sectors. So in the Plan San Lee Plan, there were also several quotes from the community about that growth and higher density should be focused in areas where it's most suitable, a strong desire to preserve open space and farmland, residents value the small town feel and rural character of the community. And so we're just requesting that Lee County consider recurring dedication of present use value, rollback taxes, or other methods for funding permanent agricultural conservation easements to balance economic growth with agricultural history. Just as these opportunities to continue to arise, we'd love for y'all to consider funding agricultural conservation. And for our part, we're going to continue to partner with landowners to place conservation easements on farms and forests in the county, and we'll continue to leverage match funds for effective working lands protection. All right, and thank you so much. And yeah, I'm happy to take your questions, and my contact information is up here as well. And I have a colleague, Melissa Kennedy, who has been helping out a lot in Lee County, and she really wanted to be here tonight, but she had a family emergency. But we're, we're both really excited with all the interest and, and opportunity here in Lee. So thanks for having me.
Thank you, Margaret. Questions for Margaret? Commissioner, or excuse me, Lovick.
Couple of questions. So you said open is included in this? It doesn't have to be a working agriculture?
Yes. So, so for Triangle Land Conservancy, we hold conservation easements on open space and working lands. For a lot of the funding sources that I just showed you, the state and the federal funding sources, they are targeting specifically working lands conservation. But TLC also has some just on habitat as well, and it just depends what funding sources we'd be able to use, so.
So if a landowner had some land, but wouldn't a working farm, and they want to protect it from community building, things like that, they can protect it this way?
Yes, and we, we have sort of a land criteria that we go through with a farmer, or with a landowner, sorry. And so we look at the qualities of their, their land, what their goals are as a landowner. That's a lot of my job, is answering initial questions when people call and have just that kind of goal and going through what are your goals, what kinds of features are there in the property that you want to see preserved, how much restriction would you be comfortable with, and then, and then we go from there. So yeah, we do have all kinds.
And if they choose later, let's say the Ayers die, the siblings pick it up, they want to get out of it, that's where the rollback taxes come in.
So no, the rollback taxes, you can leave the Present Use Value Program. That's the tax program that most farms and forests are enrolled in currently. With a conservation easement, it is permanent, and it runs with the land. And so it is going to tie the hands of future owners, which is a big consideration, which is why we, we work with our landowners for at least about a year usually to make sure that they've consulted with their family members and that they, they know what they're getting into and because it does tie the, the future uses of the property. So if they, if the Ayers passed away and they left it to their cousins or whoever, they would be able to continue to use it as a farm and agritourism business, live on the property, or let it grow up and be a working forest if they wanted. But they couldn't do a Dollar General or a strip mall or something.
Or no, they can always sell it to another farmer.
They could. Yeah.
But not a housing project.
Correct.
The reason I'm asking some of these questions, people seeing this maybe. And give us the formula. You said the Ayers farm here, 45 acres, around 730,000. How do you come up with that evaluation?
So that one is a calculator from the state of North Carolina. So they put out, they use the tax value that's published by the county, and then they have a formula to adjust that so that they're all kind of even among the counties. And that's put out by the Department of Revenue, and then the difference between the fair market value and the present use value is kind of what they consider to be the total conservation easement value because that's what you're giving up. When you do a conservation easement, you're giving up the right to develop your land, so you're agreeing that it's going to continue to be a farm, and so its main value would be its farm value. And so they use that as their main conservation easement calculation. And so with that particular project, that's what we use. Typically, we do an appraisal. There are appraisers who can look at these particular pieces of property and say, okay, if you were to sell it on the fair market tomorrow, your 100-acre farm, to the highest bidder, how much would you get? And then after you put this conservation easement on it and you were to sell it on the open market to the highest bidder, how much would you get? And the difference between those numbers is considered the conservation easement value.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Sure.
Commissioner Connect.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves.
I'm good.
Commissioner Sharp. I do have a question. I'm going to put Mr. Brown on the spot if I could, sir. Do you have an estimate of what the rollback taxes revenue we are on an average basis?
I have that information now. I did submit it to Mr. Bill Stone, and I just, you have a figure for...
Oh, she has it.
The 23 was 60, the county levy was $67,773.08.
So that figure is something that is not consistent yearly. It depends on what's going on, what happens in transactions of property. So in, in times where recession or such as that, then, you know, that value can be, you know, pretty slim. So it depends on the properties that are actually involved in sale, as to whether they're actually in the program, and should they come out or such as that.
Yeah, again, because I was making notes on all these larger counties, and I'm realizing we're not as big as they are.
No, sir, we're not.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions of Margaret? I do want to add that we were discussing in the hallway, and this is probably a reason why a lot of Yankees are leaving. I attended the Madison County Board of Supervisors meeting last July, and the chairman at the time presented a 300 and some odd page document, state mandating that each county will dedicate a certain percentage, I want to say the percentage was five, six percent, of their arable land to convert to solar farms. They were mandating that they would build solar farms on a certain percentage of their arable farmland in Madison County, but this was across the state of North, of New York. So I just hope never, ever to see anything like that here in North Carolina. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is managers' report, and...
Just one announcement. We just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that nonprofit funding application is open at this point and is available on our website. And also, I believe we have applications available at the Summit Building and at the library. So that's it.
Is there a contact person noted on there?
That person this year.
Did you get that, Nancy? Richard? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
I had the opportunity over the past couple of days to ride around and look at some of our parks, and I was just thinking, and the thing that I noticed was somebody was at every park. I think it was the nice weather, especially today. But I was glad to see people using the park. They're using the open space, and just glad to see that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
Just a friendly reminder that voting, early voting is going to start pretty soon, I think February 15th. Please take advantage of your vote.
Thank you, sir.
No, I'm not running.
Commissioner Connect.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick.
Just want to thank each one of you coming out tonight. Good comments. You put some food with thought in some of our heads on a lot of different subjects, including our public comments. I'd like to thank you for that. Had the opportunity Saturday to attend, it's called Let's Do It Together. A group came together and honored our African-American leaders here, and I thought they had a really good thing in mind. You know, many times we honor people when they pass from this place, and that's not the right way to do it. So they honored several leaders. One of them was our own Mr. Robert T. Reeves. I learned what the T stood for, and, but I won't share that with the crowd tonight if you'd like to tell them later.
Thank you.
We, we learned that, so.
Wow, we got on that subject.
But I, I like to, you know, I look at it this way. God doesn't see color, so I'm not going to use color tonight, but I'm going, I'm going to use what you have contributed for us, for Lee County, and I want to honor you for that while you're alive, and I thank you for that. It was a great, great program they did, and, but I want to do it face to face and for the people here and the people seeing this to know why you're here. I just don't want to do it while you're, when you leave this place or any others leave it, but I want to thank you for what you've done for this county and your contributions for it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
He ain't going nowhere. He's too mean.
Well, I didn't say he's going anywhere. I'm just saying we're going to honor him tonight.
That's my support base over here.
Thank you. And if I could add to that, I appreciate Commissioner Reeves' expertise, knowledge, wealth of experience.
Yes.
And I pick his brain from time to time. With that being said, I do want to say thank you for our special presentations tonight. Very informative, brought a lot of information to us. I wasn't aware that, and Mr. Lee, I want to say thank you for staying, sitting through this. This is how sausage is made, but these will be some topics that we'll discuss with the school superintendent and the, and the chairman of their board, some, as a suggestion and an idea. But that being said, I want to say thank you to the staff for all the work you've done, everything that you put into what you do on a daily basis for the community, for the county. And I can't say enough about the staff we have, and you are not taking another job. She's the only person that we can hire and fire, so she's not fired. So without further ado, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Please drive safe, seat belts, and no speeding.